Good afternoon. Sorry for the delay. I will call to order the June 8th meeting of the Salina City Commission. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Angel?
Here.
Commissioner Arbke?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Peck?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic with which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have the Citizens Forum. This is where anyone from the public can come up and speak on anything not on today's agenda. Please give us your name and address.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Ray Ruska from Electronics of Salina. I would like to share some information relating to the smoking ordinance. And the report name is Proposed Smoking Ordinance Position Paper.
Sir, excuse me just a moment. If you're going to make a comment, it has to be on anything not on today's agenda, and that is part of our agenda.
Well, this is -- I'm not going to make a comment. I was going to give you a report by the Boone Liberty Coalition.
But if it's regarding the smoking issue, it is on today's agenda? So is it anything not related to the smoking?
No, it's not.
Okay. Then you'll be able to speak when we cover that on our agenda, which is later on towards the afternoon, later right in the afternoon. Did you get a copy of today's agenda? It was at the entrance.
Yeah, I did. I was just wanting to give this report to the Commissioners. You know, it was for a later discussion. It wasn't for today's discussion.
Okay. Well, if it's regarding the clean air ordinance, that's 8.5 today, so you can share that information with us at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's James O'Shea. I live at 2314 Hillside Drive. And I was wondering, I haven't heard anything from the city as far as since the county Commissioners passed their allowing people to have fireworks or buy fireworks. You guys got anything in plan for legalizing them within the city limits for this year, or is that going to be put off, or what's going to happen?
Not that I'm aware of.
Anybody brought it up for discussion?
Not until today, sir.
Hey, I sure appreciate it if you would, you know? Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
James, you're just attracted to smoke, aren't you?
Why do you think I'm so short?
Any other public comment on anything not on today's agenda? If not, we'll continue. There are no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so we will go on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of June 1st, 2009. Item 6.2, resolution number 096629, expressing gratitude and appreciation to Galen E. Crum for his employment with the city of Salina from October 15th, 1978, to June 15th, 2009.
Okay, I need a motion to approve.
Move we approve the consent agenda?
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Development business.
Item 7.1, acceptance of offered easement right-of-way and restricted access dedication and authorize the mayor to sign the Mulberry Creek addition plat.
Mr. Andrew -- oh, there's so many people in the room, I couldn't find you. Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a combined preliminary final plat application that's been filed by John Ward on behalf of the Ward family. It's a piece of property that's been in the family for about 30 years. It's a pretty remote piece of property that's located at the end of North Fifth Street where Diamond Drive ends. This property's been in the city for about 30 years. It's remained undeveloped and unplatted since that time. It's a little over five-acre parcel of ground, and the boundary is not proposed to be changed from what the ownership is today. The goal is to try to create a small building lot or building pad on the west side of Mulberry Creek that would be elevated with fill. And because the base flood elevation there is 1219, they would need to create a pad for the building that was above that. There are existing utilities in the way of water and gas and electricity in the area. There is no sewer service directly in the area. The immediate plan of the applicant is to construct only a building that would use to store RVs or recreational vehicles, and that wouldn't necessarily need sanitary sewer service. There is a storm sewer pipe that you can almost see in red there that runs over from North Fifth Street and into Mulberry Creek. Most of the capacity of that pipe is used by Grain Belt Supply and runoff from their site. So the runoff from this site would go directly to Mulberry Creek, which is at the rear of the site. There are no additional easements proposed on the interior, but there is a request to reduce a 50-foot easement that exists down to 30 feet. And the only thing in there is an existing storm sewer, which would still be protected by that 30 feet. Planning Commission looked at this proposed plat on their May 19th agenda, and there's discussion about the status of North Fifth Street, driveway access, and it was agreed that limiting any driveway access to that to the north 150 feet of the property, which would match up with the motel driveway across the street, the reduction of the easement from 50 feet to 30 feet, and agreement that they would plot both the drainage easement from Mulberry Creek and the floodway boundary. And there was an agreement that there would be no development east of Mulberry Creek as that is not really developable. The other aspect of that was that they would agree that if there was ever a benefit district formed in the future to pave Fifth Street, that they would not protest that. So this comes to you with a recommendation for approval of the plat, and if you concur with that, a motion should be made to accept the reduced easement width, the right-of-way for North Fifth, and restricted access limitations on Fifth Street, and authorize the mayor to sign the plat. John, if you could go to the floodway/floodplain map. Just going to -- it's -- this shows the bigger picture as well as the smaller picture, but the speckled area there is North Ohio and North Fifth Street going out, and the city of Salina is unlikely to ever be able to grow out to the interstate because of the floodway that's in between the levee and I-70. And you can see this spot right here, the wards have this dark shaded spot right here is the only spot that they can really build on, and so that is their focus. Even though they have five acres there, there's about two acres there that they could do something with, and that's their proposal here. So with that, I'd be happy to address any questions about their plat.
Where is the city limit approximately from all of this? How far?
Well, actually, this property is the city limit on all sides. The -- I don't know if you have that layer on, John, but the city limit runs here, here, and then down.
Okay, so they are right at the --
This is not in, this is not in, and the interstate is not in right there. So they're kind of a little peninsula.
Okay, thank you. Questions of Mr. Andrew?
Were there any discussions about signage or anything like that that they planned to do with the building?
Not as far as the building itself. We did have some discussion. They have some existing billboard signs on the interstate, and we wouldn't consider the billboard signs to be development from the standpoint that it doesn't need services or utilities. So really, the emphasis was to say when you get on the other side of the creek, you couldn't build any habitable structures or anything that needed city services or emergency services because you just can't get to it.
If not, I'll open it up to public comment. If there is none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor, I move that we accept the offered easement right-of-way and restricted access dedication and authorize you, the mayor, to sign the Mulberry Creek addition plat.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the offered easement right-of-way and restricted access dedication and authorize the mayor to sign the Mulberry Creek addition plat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 7.2, application number Z09-5, requesting a change in zoning district classification from A1 to C5 on a tract of land located on the east side of North Fifth Street, north of I-70. Sub item 7.2A, first reading ordinance number 0510503.
Mr. Andrew?
In order for the wards to have a buildable lot here, they needed two things. One, they needed to create a platted lot to build on, and the second thing is that they currently have agricultural zoning. So we looked at the surrounding development pattern and the districts that best accommodate the RV storage that they were talking about, and there is C5 zoning and industrial zoning north of the interstate there, but they selected C5 zoning, which is a commercial district and does allow the use that they are proposing. The primary difference between commercial and industrial is in commercial, you have to have a paved driveway, paved access and parking, and also provide some front yard landscaping. They get credit for all the trees that they have on the property, so they'll probably be subtracting trees and not planting them, but they have more than enough to provide a front yard tree buffer. But they do have 322 feet of drainage on North Fifth. It's not all usable, and really, the question that was looked at was, is this more suitable for floodplain, floodway, open space, or some limited commercial development? And there is a piece that's right next to Fifth Street that is suitable for development, and that's what their focus has been. And so neither Diamond Drive or Fifth Street meet current city standards. Diamond Drive is paved, but doesn't meet our paving requirements or have curb and gutter, and Fifth Street is only gravel at this time. If you were looking for a use that was going to be a low-traffic generator, RV storage would probably be near the top of the list. They -- Planning Commission considered this at their May 19th meeting along with the plat, and they recommended approval of the zoning change. So this would come to you on first reading, and if you're in agreement with that recommendation, a motion should be made to change the zoning to C5, and second reading would be scheduled for your next meeting. With that, I'd be happy to address any questions.
I failed to ask this on the last picture, and I just recognized it again, and I'm going to ask now. Is that a business to the north of it, to the north of this land that we're talking about?
No, that's somebody's residence. That's Mr. Hewitt. You see his reference in the minutes.
I wondered if that was him.
He was concerned that whether this --
About the drainage?
If, both about drainage and if this were approved, if that would make him have to come into the city. This, as long as we have the tree buffer remain along the north side there, he should be minimally impacted, but it will not cause him to have to come into the city or anything.
Okay, that's what I was reading in the narrative. Any other questions of staff? If not, I'll open it up for public comment. With none, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor, I'd move we adopt ordinance number 09-10503, approving this zoning change from A1 to C5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 09-10503, application Z09-5, request the change in zone from A1 to C5. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 7.3, consider protests of approval of application CU09-4 to allow an outdoor patio within the C4 district located at 249 North Santa Fe.
Mr. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Back in 2001, the issue of the day was not smoking, it was drinking establishments. And the city commission in June of 2001 actually passed a moratorium and said, "No new drinking establishments downtown until we sort out some things as far as the regulations or filter for establishing new drinking establishments in the downtown area." So there were a couple of task forces that were formed. Planning Division did some study, visited other communities, provided information to the various groups at meetings, and the BID, now Lead District Board of Directors, made a recommendation that any future drinking establishments in the downtown area established should go through a conditional use permit process. And what that means is that the proposal would be reviewed at a public hearing, that there would be notice provided to all the property owners within 200 feet of that site, and they would have a chance to comment on the proposed drinking establishment at that hearing. They also recommended that any plan to add an outdoor patio to an existing or new drinking establishment should also go through that process. That was all reviewed and filtered through by the Planning Commission and the City Commission. And in September of 2001, there was a new set of regulations established that require a conditional use permit for all drinking establishments and require a conditional use permit for any outdoor patio. That was modified slightly last year when the C4 uses were looked at, and now if you are doing a restaurant or food service establishment that just happens to serve wine, that doesn't require you to go through the conditional use permit process. Only a true bar that would not have any food service or restaurant operation would still have to get the conditional use permit. So before, we had a delicatessen that wanted to add beer to their luncheon menu, and they had to go through a conditional use process. A place like Martinelli's was established before this, but they would have had to do that. But that distinction has been made now, so if you're a restaurant that serves wine or beer, you don't have to go through that process. If you're a bar that has no food service at all, you do. And so this applicant is the Rendezvous Bar, which is a bar, which does not have any food service, and it's been in this location for a long time as the Rendezvous Bar, and before that, Afterburner and Blue Lounge, and you may remember something before that. It's a little bit unusual that it's on a 50-foot wide lot, and most of our 50-foot wide lots downtown are covered wall-to-wall with building. But in this case, the building's 23 feet wide, and there's 27 feet south of that, and the applicant, Mr. Graybeal, would like to take that area and construct an outdoor serving area in that area. The plan would be a 25-by-36 outdoor patio. It would have planters and a fence on top of the planters, and there would be a pergola, which is a support structure that would support kind of some lattice work and a place to hang lights from. And the plan had 12 tables shown on it for a capacity of 48. The plan also was labeled 52, which caused some initial confusion for staff. But the layout would call for, let's see if we can get our bearings here, but to the right would be Santa Fe, and to the bottom would be the south property line, and then this is the bar itself. You've got a door from the bar out to the patio. There's an air conditioner compressor here, so they would do that, and they're proposing a gated entrance on both sides, east and west. And one of the reasons, dating back from 2001, my patios were classified as a conditional use is because in some cases, they could add substantially to the occupant load of the existing bar, and also, they do tend to project more noise onto neighboring properties than an indoor establishment. So the conditional use process was to allow those spillover effects to be addressed in a public comment and review process, which is where we're at now. And so your role is simply to determine whether the addition of this seating area would negatively impact the surrounding area. One of the stipulations for the downtown is that outdoor patios can't be bigger than the bar they serve. Said we've gone around on different numbers, but arrived at a number of 50 for the outdoor area and between 80 and 90 for the indoor area. So the proposed outdoor area is substantially smaller than the seating capacity. And in reviewing those, both inside and outside the downtown area, one drawback associated with the outdoor serving areas is there's a little more difficulty in managing who enters and exits the bar, particularly if you have openings in the patio or gates in the patio. If you're familiar with what used to be JC's and is now Speakeasy, that was the first patio in Salina, and there is no gate where the public or patrons can go into the patio without going through the bar first or exiting the bar. There is a gate that a lot of people don't know about, has an emergency alarm on it, which if there's a fire, you can hit that and exit the patio immediately, but it's not for public use. And so some of the concern about patios that a gate or entryway would be proposed is the ability to pass alcohol over the fence or for people to leave the bar while still possessing alcohol. So that is some of the concerns that have been expressed about outdoor patios. And so that, the, again, this is pretty much in scale with this area and with the outdoor patio that was constructed at Paramount Bar in 2006. And the, as far as traffic or access in the downtown area, you're not required to provide your own off-street parking. You can use public parking that's available. I think John was showing you, if you want to go back to that photo, John, he was showing you that this is a view of the patio behind Paramount. And one of the issues there was that they had a door that exited out of the back of the bar, that was their emergency exit. When you fence that area in, then you have to create a new emergency exit, and they did that with a gate at the side of the patio that actually doesn't go directly into the alley, but off to the south side. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this. There was notification provided to owners that own property within 200 feet. There were presentations made by staff and the applicant's architect, Mr. Ettinger, and the Planning Commission voted seven to zero to approve the rendezvous plan, and they did not include any limitations on use of the patio or any conditions of approval. And so the Planning Commission, in their review, was not concerned about the two gates on the east and west that were proposed within the patio. There was no one from the public that appeared. We did read a letter of opposition that was received from one of the neighboring property owners. There is a provision in the conditional use section of the ordinance that if you are denied and you're an applicant and you want to appeal, or if you are neighboring property owners and you want to submit a petition, that can push a Planning Commission decision to the City Commission, and that's where we're at now. We had a protest petition that was filed after the Planning Commission action. It was signed by three property owners on Santa Fe and Seventh Street, and their ownership taken together was 44 percent of the protest area, which made it a valid protest. And the primary effect of a protest on any zoning decision is it requires you as a body to have four affirmative votes to approve something. So we have identified a number of alternatives there. I'll go through them one by one. Alternative one would essentially be to ratify what the Planning Commission did, which would be to approve the plan that was submitted as in the location proposed and the configuration proposed and with the gates proposed as they were. If you believe that there's an alternative to that that might be more acceptable, such as eliminating the gates on the exterior of the patio and making patrons go to and from the patio through the bar, that would be alternative two. You could do that today with four affirmative votes. I believe that if there was a request made to relocate that, that you could also approve that with four votes, although if you didn't have four votes for that and just had a majority, you could send it back to the Planning Commission to rework that. Or if you believe that this shouldn't be approved at all, you think it would be incompatible with the surrounding area, then you could overturn the Planning Commission's decision. This would also require four affirmative votes. So we have given you a packet that has all, we think, the relevant drawings, the discussion from the Planning Commission, and the signed protest petition from three owners. I would clarify two things, at least based on our understanding of the opposition. The opposition to the patio is not the patio in and of itself, but its location next to Santa Fe as opposed to farther back on the site. You could go back to our site plan, John. It's my understanding that there's some of the objection is the fact that we have the fence line and the exit right out at Santa Fe, and some think it would be preferable if the patio was tucked back in this location here as opposed to out front. And then I think the other objection is the exits that are proposed, and as reflected in the Planning Commission minutes, the exits and entrances that are in the patio itself are voluntary. They're put there for the convenience of the patrons and not because they're required for any fire safety or exiting purposes. So we would clarify those two points as far as the exits in the patio, those were not required as a fire safety requirement, but rather put there as part of the plan for the convenience of the patrons of the rendezvous bar. I think with that, I'll stand for any questions that you have. We have other departments here represented as well, if you have questions of them.
On this particular photo right here, is there one or two openings into the bar itself from the patio? I see a thing marked exit with an arrow, but then I see the door over there.
Mr. Ettinger, could explain. I think this is just mislocated, and it's supposed to be pointing right here.
Okay, so there is only one door in and out of the bar?
It's right next to this air, this air conditioning unit here.
Okay, that's how I saw that.
So this is a gate, and this is a gate, but this is the connection. And then this is an entry into the bar, and then there's another door at the rear.
What will be, from where that front patio ends, what will be the rest of that use? Is there going to be parking back there, or is it just going to be empty gravel space?
It is gravel, and there wasn't any plan that we saw to change that.
And someone physically park there?
It would be difficult to have enough room to get in there, park, and physically get back out with the alley and having the building there. There's only 27 feet there, so even if you tried to maybe could pull in some cars right here and back in and out of the alley, but if you were up in here, you wouldn't really be able to turn around. It was primarily used as a cut-through along here with parallel parking.
And at this time, those gates around the patio will not be with an alarm?
No, they're not proposed. They wouldn't even have to be gates. They could simply be openings.
Doorways.
Yes.
And is there a reason why the back part of the, I had a conversation with the owner as to why the patio wasn't going to be back further back, but just to enlighten everybody here, is there a reason why that location was put at the front instead of at the end? the end?
That would be something for the owner and his architect to indicate why they located it in that location.
Okay, I'll ask that. Any other questions of Mr. Andrew?
Yes, is that, is that door from the establishment to the patio new?
As far as I know, it is.
Quick picture there, and it looked like that'd be a new door location?
I believe it's a proposed opening, not existing.
Okay. And could you go back to the picture that shows the, the fascia of the front? Thank you.
Quick question about building materials. Is this, is this all treated lumber? Is there a seat, it's all treated?
I believe Mr. Ettinger suspected, so he could answer that question for you.
Any other questions of Mr. Andrew?
Yes, one of your proposals was to eliminate those gate to us.
Right. Now, to see whether that would alleviate some of the concerns of neighboring property owners about alcohol being transported in and out of the patio. The more openings you have in the patio, the more difficult it is to supervise who comes and goes.
Okay.
Is the door at the Paramount with an alarm, or is it a free open gate?
It was set up as an alarm exit only for emergency purposes, but last time we checked, it did not appear to be activated. So, we're paying a visit over there to see if that's in need of repair.
And just so I can keep this straight, how is what they're doing at the rendezvous bar, how is that rendezvous bar, how is that any different from what we had at Big Nose Kate? I realize it was on a second storage, a second store, second floor. So, was that also a conditional use, or what was, how is that in the downtown area?
In the case of Big Nose Kate's, they didn't have an establishment there at all. The first bar they had was called Sixth Street Pub, which wasn't there very long. Then, they did an expansion of that, they put martinis on the first floor and Big Nose Kate's on the second floor, and they added an outdoor balcony where you could step out and be in the open air overlooking Santa Fe. And because of the number of lofts in that neighborhood and because of concern about possible dropping of bottles or glassware down on the sidewalk, they had two stipulations. One was that no bottles or glassware out on the balcony, and then they asked that use of the balcony be shut down at midnight. And recently, they, owners asked the Planning Commission to revisit that restriction because they were concerned that their patrons who smoked wouldn't be able to use the balcony between 12 and 2:00 a.m. So, they asked for that restriction from midnight to closing time, and the Planning Commission agreed to lift that.
Okay.
Mr. Andrew, how long has that patio been open at the Paramount?
It was built in the summer of '06, I believe.
Do you know, has there been an increase in complaints or incidents of alcohol leaving the premises over the fence through the gate? Any of those concerns that we have with the rendezvous?
I think I would probably defer to the neighbors there. We have gotten comments about the use of that and that it being left open. And we did confirm that the alarm that was originally placed on it wasn't there anymore, so we're working with Mr. Romi to get that reestablished. But the plan there was that that was emergency access only, and all the patrons would enter and exit from Santa Fe. And so, the concern we've gotten about the Paramount was that patrons were still entering and exiting from that gate and not from the front of the, front of the bar.
Are some of those neighboring businesses open in the evening, or are they eight to five, eight to six type?
They're generally closed at five or 5:30, and the complaints generally have to do with what they find when they open for business in the morning.
Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Andrew?
Yeah, just one. The Kansas Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, do they have any stipulations on an outdoor patio being sealed from the public or, or anything like that that have come into play? And that might be a question for Mr. Ettinger, but...
Well, primarily, it's been addressed through the, the fire code, and it's, it's a function of the capacity of the bar and the capacity of the patio, and if you have enough exits, then you don't, aren't required to have exits in the patio itself.
But they don't have any stipulation that says it has to be sealed off through a...
Not from a security standpoint or anything.
It could just be a completely open structure.
As far as I know.
Quick question regarding the exits. Those were, are those, I mean, I'm assuming those are one of the larger issues for those who are protesting this?
That is, my understanding, the two main focus points were the, the ability to go directly from the patio to Santa Fe sidewalk, or from the patio to the rear alley without going through the bar. And then, the other comment was, had to do with the location and why it couldn't be pushed farther back away from Santa Fe.
Okay, I'm assuming for Mr. Graybill, those, those exits and entrances are, they're important to you, though.
We discussed taking out the front exit before we did the city planning, and just leaving the ones for rear. And I would prefer that that be locked and have a key for only employees, so that way we can, in an altitude maintenance.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, I don't really have a problem with this plan, but if there was a middle ground that might take off a concern or two that wasn't of major consequence to...
That's why alternative two is developed, just to see if that eliminated some of the concern.
Okay. Thanks. Dean, let's go ahead and address then a public comment.
Again, my name's Ray Ruska, Electronics of Salina. You talked and mentioned about the transport of alcohol during the night, or, you know, I've seen this happen during the day. I've seen passouts during the day. I've seen, you know, cans and bottles and vomit, and, and during the night, we've seen sexual activity in doorways, and which is inappropriate for any neighborhood. The, the other, the other issues would be, I'm assuming that you wrote the rebuttal statement that I sent, you know, the information about this?
Did you say red?
Red, uh-huh.
Yes.
Yep.
The, the primary issue here is, there's no other example of a fence on Main Street downtown Salina. That issue was brought up in 2001, when the bar across the street tried to build a patio, and it was never done. And as far as development issues and, and things of that nature, we thought that, or I believe, that a wood fence on the main, you know, property frontage line is inappropriate. It should be at least a facade of the existing building or set back, you know, to a place to where it's kind of out of the way. And then, the patio being built in the location that we're suggesting is the least impact on the area. You know, it's set back, there are no exits, they have to exit through the bar to get out of the building. That contains the, some of the issues that are, that we're concerned with. Initially, when the Planning Commission, I think they erred in their decision because all the information was not available when they approved this. And number one, the Fire Marshal Roger Williams and the Planning Commission did not have the correct information concerning the number of fire exits. There was a debate about the 50 occupant threshold and whether one or two exits were required. Finally, on June 4th, Roger Williams confirmed that Warren Ettinger was correct, that no exits were required. And the Planning Commission did not consider the least amount of impact to the area. The status quo of the vicinity is a prime concern to determine the least amount of area impact, which is building the patio set back to the rear corner of the building with no I would encourage the Commission to choose option five, using setback and no exits on their, on their action, or option six, to table for determination if patios are included in public places. Smoking is permitted in public places. Now, that's a smoking issue, and I probably, I don't know if I can say that now, but it was just part of the, initially, you were mentioning that I couldn't talk about smoking issues or ordinance issues. And I guess if you have any questions, I'd answer any of it you might be concerned with.
Sure, you're really asking for is no exits to the patio?
No exits and setback. Set the patio back on the property line so it doesn't interfere with development issues of other property owners. One issue is, the Lee Hardware Building is being developed by Mike Forstall, and I don't think he's too pleased with having to look at a fence, you know, from across the street. But Mike can talk more about that, you know, as far as his concerns. And...
What is it now? Isn't it just a rock and a parking lot?
Well, it was, it was, it just gravel, and people drove through there and tried to, you know, to, you know, to park there, you know, because that was the only place they could park. One issue is the encroachment across the, onto the next property, which is Mike Forstall's. They built a fence to, to stop that activity, and they just run over the fence. That fence has been replaced probably at least three times that I know of. Every time, it never changes. They just keep encroaching, and it doesn't ever change.
Well, but with this new setup, I understand that there, it'll be very difficult to have any kind of parking there, so that might prevent that from happening, because they're not going to be having any vehicles there.
Yeah, possibly, but what about the frontal, front part of it? There's going to be 30 feet in the front and 30 feet in the back or more.
Well, and I understand that that fence is going to be about eight feet tall there at the, around the whole patio.
Now, I'm talking about the, the fence from the patio to, if it, if it's, if it's set back, there'd be a fence right next to Mike Forstall's land, and at the rear of the patio, there will be a fence right next to Mike Forstall's land. And they will attempt probably to use that as parking. And I suggested in my, in my report, or the, what I submitted, that the setback from the front would provide parking and/or access pickup delivery that could be landscaped. Now, that's the frontal area where they're, you know. And then, of course, in the back, they still have access to the rear for deliveries, trash, and their cooler to gain access to it. By moving this patio or setting it back would not affect that. It would, it wouldn't make any difference.
Well, and that was my question, so I can't wait to hear from the owner or the architect to see why they chose to build it closer to the front.
My, as I reiterated before, I guess my position is, I don't have any objections to building the patio, I just have an objection to the location and the status quo of the neighborhood and no exits. Now, that, to me, it makes a lot of sense, so...
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Is the owner or architect here so they could possibly answer some of our questions?
Good afternoon, my name is Warren Ettinger. My business address is 116 South Santa Fe, and I'm the architect for the project. I'd like to give you a little bit of background about the area and some of the intentions for that part of North Santa Fe. In 2002, the city and Salina Downtown Incorporated commissioned a report from Puma, it's commonly called the Puma Report. It talks about the area that's bounded by Ash to North Street, and includes the North Santa Fe area there, describes it as the Mill District. And it talks about it being an area that should be developed for dance clubs, nightclubs, bars, and so on. It also looked at the main part of downtown and the conditional use permit process that's currently in place, that that was a good way to address those kinds of issues in the immediate downtown. Their suggestion was that for the Mill District, the area that we're talking about, that the conditional use permit be removed as far as bar and nightclub similar kind of uses. They saw that as being a primary use for that area. That's not been implemented yet, but I think that does indicate the direction that, that area is intended, how it's intended to get developed. The Planning Commission obviously looked at this issue and looked at it from the conditional use standpoint. The conditional use really is a list of activities that are assumed to be compatible with the primary zoning in that area. When a Planning Commission looks at the conditional use activities, they look at it to make sure that there is a good compatibility with it. They look at the details of how it's developed to make sure that there isn't something that conflicts with other activities. But, but the basic starting point is that it is already a use or an activity that should be, if it's designed properly, be compatible with the, with the other activities in that area. They reviewed the proposal, we discussed a number of different questions about it, and in the end, they approved it without restriction. Mr. Graybill mentioned that during that discussion, we did talk about the number of exits and whether they were required or not, and we voluntarily suggested that we would not put the exit direct onto Santa Fe, but did want to keep the gate to the rear for the purpose of providing access for service and maintenance and so on. That it would not be used as a primary exit from that area because our occupant load isn't required, and actually would probably even be locked and not marked as an exit. The main, well, that was, so after they approved it without restriction, they went to the BID Design Review Board, the Business Improvement Design Review Board, looks at projects within the BID primarily for visual compatibility with the surrounding area. And they looked at the materials and the method of construction and so on, and also approved it with one stipulation, and that is that in approximately a year when the treated wood has weathered enough that it will accept paint, that we'll come back and paint it in a color that's approved by city staff.
You say paint, do you mean paint or stain?
Either. It's to be colored.
Okay.
Yep. Also, the plans have been submitted to the Building Services Department for issuance of a building permit. A fence does not actually require a building permit if it's five feet or less, but because part of the structure is over five feet and because there's some electrical associated with it, it is being submitted for a building permit. That process is all but complete. They've completed their review, including the fire department's review. They're waiting for the outcome of this before they will issue the permit. So, that's, that's been approved, with the exception of actually issuing the permit. Kansas ABC also regulates the activity and, not only in the bar, but also in the patio. There's been some discussion about containers and alcohol leaving bars and patios and so on, and that is strictly prohibited by the ABC under some pretty significant penalties. That's a policing activity both for the bar owner and for, literally for the police. Whether or not the litter that's been seen in the area originates from bars or whether it comes from cars that's carried to the site is often a debate, and some of the bar owners have said that they've seen containers that obviously didn't come from the bars because it's not sold there. So, at any rate, the, some of the issues that have been raised about policing activities for control of access through the patio and through the bar and so on is, is regulated by the ABC. An issue for the bar owner is the location of the, and configuration of the patio and its access. And in order to comply with those requirements, he needs to be able to see who is coming and going from the patio, from within the bar, or station someone in the patio area to monitor the activity. Configuration of the fence, the planters, and so on is intended to make it difficult for people to pass alcohol... people to pass alcohol back and forth over or through the fence. It's a closed fence, so that's made more difficult. Moving the patio to the rear creates several issues. One of them is that there currently is a curb cut on Santa Fe, and if we provide space for people to park in the front, they're going to, even though they're not supposed to. And so we would like to keep that from happening. Also, if we pull the fence back a short enough distance you can't park there, but provide a place for people to congregate, that's also a concern or an activity that we don't want necessarily promote there either. Pulling the fence or the enclosure farther to the back raises some issues about how we make the opening, the connection back into the bar, and how that, how we have access or visibility to the people coming and going from the patio into the bar. And looking at those considerations, that, we picked this spot because it helped control the use of the site and also gave the owner the ability to control ingress and egress from the, from the patio. Based on the reviews that have occurred, the planning commission, the BID, the Building Services Department, and the approvals that are already in place at that level, I would suggest that we're probably in a position where we would expect to receive a favorable vote for approval of it at this stage also. Any questions?
The little planter boxes that you've got there, are those inside the fence or outside?
They're inside the fence. They provide a little bit of a buffer, so...
And how high are they?
They're about, the planter itself is about 18 inches.
Warren, it's only going to have two stringers going along the fence there?
I believe that's right.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the attention to painting or staining, just simply because it seems like treated lumber after time has a tendency to...
It doesn't improve in appearance.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to go back to the front fascia picture again? Is that, the fascia of that building, I can't see it really well, so I'll ask you, is that glass front, and then we've got an awning overhead and a painted surface above and a painted surface below the windows?
That's correct. And if you look in the photograph, the edges of the storefront are curved. There's, the glass, I think, is actually curved there. I don't know, we've got the ability to get any closer in the photograph.
Okay. Would there, would there be the possibility with the whole issue of the door, understanding that to have some access, move tables in and out and do work to that would be important? Would there be the ability to design and do like just a removable six-foot panel that would have to be bolted on and off versus a door that would have to be locked and then maybe, you know, if left open would be subject to complaints and issues down the road?
I think for the ability to maintain the fence and operate the opening, I would prefer to see the hinged opening that has a hasp and a lock, not something that, currently the drawing shows a gate with a kind of an arch top, so it visually breaks from the rest of the fence. We can make it appear as the rest of the fence without calling attention to it.
Then the egress door that was to be done at the Paramount, if that type of thing is used, is that electrically driven? And do you guys have suitable electric out there in order to put that in, if that's required?
Since we're not required to have a fire exit from the patio, we would propose not to do that and simply lock it so that there isn't the option for a patron to go through that, that gate. And again, if we don't make it a visually obvious gate, we shouldn't have any attempt at it either. But to answer the other question, yes, there is electrical out there because there'll be stringing lights in the little overhead trellis.
Or questions of the owner? Out of curiosity, what are the hours of that bar?
Well, we're open until midnight, Friday and Saturday until two.
But when do you open?
Nine.
PM?
AM.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Mayor, I have one question for Mr. Etiker, if I could. Mr. Etiker, a question on the maintenance access. Is there, I know you talked about earlier it would be difficult to stack cars for parking in the rear, or actually, I think, Mr. Andrew indicated that because of the narrowness of the area and access from the alley. But is there adequate room that you could actually have maintenance access from the rear portion of the patio?
That's about a 24, 25-foot width back there, so yeah, you can back a truck in there, for instance, a pickup to bring in the tables and chairs or something like that. Also, is deliveries going to happen through the back door, which is, I think, the way it currently happens.
Okay, so you do have an option there, maybe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the owner or the architect? Thank you. Additional public comment?
Hello, I'm Mike Forstall, president of the Lee. I own most all the open lots between Fifth and Santa Fe, north of Elm. And I have to say one thing, I didn't receive any notice. I would assume I was within 200 feet, but I was notified by Ray Haruska. And I'd have to tell you that I agree with him in the fact that I don't feel that a patio that close to Santa Fe is needed in that environment that's down there. This is the Mill District. The patio that they proposed looks like something that's residential. Now, I have offered, and I've told the architect that, I've offered to provide ornamental fencing on the east and south side so that it would look like something that is available in a Mill District, in a commercial setting. I would actually propose to see it back to the corner. We all understand that, yes, you can't park in 25 feet. Well, you can't if you're trying to turn your car sideways. 25 feet is half the width of this room. So I'm sure somebody can pull one or two cars in next to each other, whether it be from the alley or from the front. And as all your pictures show, you've got trucks parked on either side, whether they came from Santa Fe or whether they came from the alley. Now, I do own the lot to the south of this development. We do intend to use that alley to be able to get in and out of that lot, and we do intend to create 20 parking spots in that for use in the Lee Building. And I don't know that, quite truthfully, I like the looks of that wood fence up against my property because I intend to put ornamental fencing down through there in order to make it look like the district that it's in. I would propose that we move it back if we want to do a wood fence. And I understand it's tough to control the alcohol coming and going, but if we want to keep it out toward the front, then I will voluntarily provide ornamental fencing for the east and south side so that it's compatible with my future development to the south of it. Any questions?
You talk about iron fencing?
Rod iron fencing, yes. Very similar to what was done down at the downtown Brown Mackey Building that was just finished. Have you seen the ornamental fencing that's out front of it?
The salon.
It's now a salon?
Now, it's a salon, yes. I'm a steel fabricator, so I create a lot of handrails and structural and a lot of other things.
And let me get this straight, you're volunteering that?
Yes, I am.
And you mentioned that to them?
Yes.
Whether they move it, the patio back or leave it?
Well, if they leave the patio out toward the front, we have to have something complimentary to the area. I don't feel the wood is complimentary to that area. It is a residential look that I feel that's where it belongs. And if you notice the fence they have now, they haven't kept that up, and I'm afraid Ray's wrong unless he's seen it. I've never seen them replace that fence. It's looked like that for quite a while. So I'm concerned that what they build is going to deteriorate as well.
Would the ornamental fencing have space enough between the rod iron?
Beyond four inches on center, or we can space them closer. But depends on whether you feel there's a real concern with passing alcohol.
I thought that was you all's concern.
No, it's really not my concern, that's the owner's concern. They're supposed to be in control of that.
So your concern is the aesthetics?
My concern is the aesthetics because, you know, if I can, and we all know what the economic climate is right now, if we get financing for the Lee Building, that's a $10 million job. I don't really want to look across the street at something that looks residential or something that may look like their existing fence that they have now.
And the plans for Lee Building are apartments or stores or residential?
Yes, it's residential with retail on the first floor. So you have 20,000 square foot of retail proposed for the first floor, and you have 100 apartments.
Well, I, I can empathize with, with the design aspect and your concern there a little bit. I think they have tried with the pergola over the top. I mean, if the pergola wasn't there, I would have absolutely more reservations than what I do, simply because I do think eight-foot fence or six-foot fence going around there is not, it does look more residential. But with the, with the addition of the pergola design, the lights, I mean, I think that, that does give it a patio feel. And I guess my, my thinking is this is an immediate, this is an immediate impact that they're needing approval for. And I don't, I mean, I don't know what the timeline is for a parking lot going to the south, what the timeline is for shops and apartments across the street. That might be sooner, that might be later.
Yeah.
And so I guess I...
The only problem is, once you build it, it stays. Do we maintain it? If you look at the fence they've had up for a year, it hasn't changed, not since somebody ran into it.
Well, it's, I mean, obviously, the investment was fairly low there.
I agree. I agree, and that's what I, that's what I think about that. That is something you would build in a residence. This is a commercial district. So, any other questions?
Any other questions, Mr. Forstall?
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
I'm Dave Bieberley. My office is at 227 North Santa Fe, and I'm lucky enough, well, I'm surrounded by the Paramount to the south, the Blue Goat on the east, and the Rendezvous to the north. And all in all, they've been fairly good neighbors. I can't complain. There's the usual problems you have in our parking and our building. And when I first saw this plan, I didn't have a problem with it, and I think Warren did a good job with the design, although I'd have to agree with Mike. I'm also partners with Mike and the Lee Development LLC. I have one, one other concern, not to reiterate everything that he has, he's talked about, was, I didn't have a problem with it till I came to work one night about 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, and there's a lot of noise generated in that area by the Blue Goat and not too much by the Paramount, not too much by the Rendezvous. But now we're going to have another 40, 50 people outside, and if I'm going to be renting an apartment across the street, it might have an impact on my ability to rent those apartments at 10 o'clock when everybody wants to be in bed to have a lot of noise being generated. So that's the only other thing I'd like to add to the mix. I'm not opposed to the patio, I just, I think it'd be better if it was pushed back a little bit further, just, I think that'll help abate the noise that'd be transferred across the street to our building. So, other than that, I'm, and I'd like to see the rod iron, too. I think it'd look better as far as the design of the whole downtown, so that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Kevin Romi, 219 North Santa Fe, Paramount Bar. We put that patio on the Paramount two years ago, probably the best, best money I ever spent downtown. The rod iron fence idea sounds good, but when the wind picks up, it's going to blow right through there, there's going to be trash blowing all through there. They're worried about noise factors. Well, the wood will actually contain a lot of that noise. Where the rod iron, it'll just go straight out and go into the, into the streets and just echo. So, you know, you might want to take that into effect. And, you know, maybe we won't want the rod iron fence, maybe we want it looking wood, you know, in two years when they want to put their fence up. So, you know, they're going to have to go through the same, same ordeals we have to, so just take that in consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have a noise ordinance?
We do, commissioners. And I'll kind of defer to the city attorney if I misspeak here, but I'm kind of used to seeing certain conditions on conditional use permits on any types, actually. And for something like this, you would think noise with the presumption that at some point they may want a loudspeaker, stereo, music, whatever that might be, would be addressed. And also potentially trash, that was just mentioned. Indoors, you expect, you know, trash from the perimeter to be picked up, but it's typically kept indoors for the most part, and once it gets out, it's, at some point, it's kind of beyond the owner's responsibility. But outdoors is a little more difficult, I would think. So, I was going to ask Mr. Andrew if there's some standard language we use just simply to address those two issues, because I just can't fathom that at some point they wouldn't want to have some form of a sound system out there. I would think that you'd want to do that, or maybe somebody later would. And if they would want to change and do that at this point, I would think they'd be subject just to the nuisance ordinance that we have regarding noise. So if you wanted to do anything different than that, or if the planning commission wanted to, you'd have to come back through for an amendment of this. And to me, it'd be easier to, if we knew where we were going to be, to just address it now and get it over with and not have to bring them back later.
Paramount currently doesn't have any sound system on the patio, do they? Is there any sort of sound or speaker system on the, there is?
I think, I think Mr. Andrew may be able to give you some more history on how we've dealt with noise and trash, just to see if there's anything, on the presumption that you're going to move forward with this.
It's the dreaded conditional use permit, but the, the way it was addressed back in the day, JC's Bar and Grill used to fairly regularly have out, not just amplified sound, but bring in bands with full sound system. And there were often complaints about either volume or late hours of playing. So the city commission at the time set up a process that if an existing bar wanted to have a, add a stage and everything, to have outdoor bands, that would be different than piped-in music or something, where you're talking very low wattage speakers. But if somebody had an outdoor patio and wanted to set up a stage and regularly bring in outdoor entertainment, that would be a conditional use permit process where the neighbors would be notified. And I think Mr. Stevens has experience with the Coaches Bar and Grill that was there at the corner of Ninth and Broadway. They wanted to add that, and the planning commission turned it down at that location based on objections from neighboring residents. But that is the process. We didn't see anything here that looked like a stage or anything that was being set up for outdoor entertainment. It's a pretty small area, but if they did want to later come back and have live bands or things like that, they'd be amending their existing conditional use permit, and there would be notice and a hearing, just like this process.
Any other questions, public comment?
Okay, the, that brings up a question. Ours is noise ordinance or noise issue. The, the Blue Goat across the street brings in bands on a fairly regular basis.
Well, according to what Mr. Andrews said, do they notify their neighbors that they're having weekly bands or weekly entertainment?
No. The issue that I've got is when are they going to build a patio that's going to be outside?
The conditional permit, yes.
And then that creates, you know, more issues in, you know, in that area. Because right now, they've got it inside, and you don't, you can't hear it very well because it's inside the building. So, that's just one point, you know, that I thought I'd bring up.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis Collier, got a couple properties downtown. I just, they've said pretty much everything that I, I had planned on saying this afternoon, that my concern was the aesthetics of the location, the construction materials, it does look residential. And with regards to some of the future developments and some tenant placement down in the area, that it just looks residential, and if it was a stone facade out in front, that probably might be more compatible with the area and with some of the things that are planned for that area. I have no concern with the patio itself, but I would like to see it moved back if at all possible. And I like the idea of the rod iron fence also, but some type of landscaping or topiary out there in front would be wonderful for the future plans for the area. There's some, some great ideas and great things on the horizon for, for that part of Santa Fe as well as south of there, and we, you know, certainly wouldn't want to have a deteriorating wood fence in the area or one that looks residential with regards to what we're planning for the area, so.
We are planning on having residences across the street, right?
Not houses, though. It'd look great in my backyard. Thank you.
I know about music. We took care of it out at Ninth and Broadway, and we had a permit that they had an open van. It had to close down at 10 o'clock. Amplifiers could not be off- Amplifiers could not be outside, and that was in this stipulation. Every time there is a new person, nobody tells that. And I think Mr. Jason and Mr. Andrews has been through this many times with different... I think the issue here is not so much the outside music, I think it's smoking. Everybody's going outside smoking when they would be inside. And that is a stipulation. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Stevens.
I might like to add one thing to Mr. Stevens, and it may be something for consideration for the board. You may want to consider tabling this until you get through the smoking issue, because he's probably correct. A lot of these bars and a lot of places are looking to add on in some form or fashion because they're not allowed to smoke indoors. So you may want to take that under consideration.
Thank you. Did you wish to say one more thing, Mr. Edgar? I thought I saw you stand up. Did you wish to make another comment about something?
I guess I have a couple of follow-up comments. Going back to the Puma report, it talked about the character of the Mill District, in that it is primarily mill, industrial. They described it as a gritty, kind of hard-edged area, and they recommended that it stay that way, including some of the missing sidewalks and so on. They did talk about, they recommended paving the unpaved streets, but beyond that, they wanted to keep the same kind of character that's there now. I hope that the Lee Building Development is successful. I hope that the residential proposal for that works. But I think that it needs to be looked at in the context of what is the character of that area, people that are coming into there, live there, and are going to live there need to accept the kind of environment that they're moving into. That's the kind of disagreement that we've had in other parts of downtown between bars and residences, who's there first and what is the relationship between the two. I think in this area, it's pretty clearly established that what the character of the area is, and when the residences come there, they're going to have...
Do you mind if I ask your take on the fence offer?
I think we need to look at the detail of that, because there are some regulatory issues with the fence that I think the owner needs to be, take a look at. We won't reject the offer, certainly. We'll need to take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Edgar, outside of Puma, are there any other definitions for that specific area of downtown, or has there been any recent updates to that Puma?
Salina Downtown Incorporated has been using that as a guide for ideas about how things get developed and the kind of marketing that they do and so on. It's a long process to get zoning change, to get a district established like that, but there have been movements in that direction. We've had other mixed-use projects in that general area, and that was referenced during that time also as a reason to continue with the changes that we were looking at for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Warren mentioned earlier about the cutout, curb cutout for the front. And I kind of believe that that is an advantage to, if you set back the patio, then you have a way for the clients that come and go to the bar, like taxi cabs and people picking, you know, moving back and forth. That would be kind of an advantage, to be able to pull in off-street, and they could, you know, proceed on their way. I just thought maybe that would, just something that, just a comment about that.
Thank you.
Just one final comment. As I was coming over today, I looked in, I've got a cutout in my building on the rear, and there were a couple of plastic cups there. They were beer cups. And I'm thinking, shouldn't we, they be serving beer in glass so they can't take it out? Or, you know, with a plastic cup, it's just easy to walk out with it and then throw it away.
I see both sides, and thank you. I was wondering when you were coming up.
I really tried not to today. I'm Phil Kleema with Salina Downtown, and our business address is 205 West Ash. And I have listened to comments on both sides for many weeks on this particular project. I do know that, I have confirmed with your staff that they have done a terrific job of notifying the official addresses of each one of those property owners. Whether everyone in the room had access to those is not my mission here today, but I would say that your staff has done an excellent job of notifying those neighbors. Salina Downtown has not taken official position on anything in this particular action. I do know that the whole project has been before, both the City Planning Commission and the Design Review Board, and received 100% favorable votes on both of those parties, from both of those groups. I think it is a difficult decision to make. I do know that that property has been looking like that for many years with that gravel in there, and that bent railing, and that beat-up fence. And that aesthetically, what I see before us right now would obviously be an improvement. Whether it's the right improvement, that's not for me to say. I think it's a great thing that when we have people wanting to invest in the district. And in response to your, has anything been updated since 2002 on the Puma plan? No. We did have a request in to do that, but it has been tabled for a while, simply because of the cost of updating that particular plan, Mr. Jennings.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Kleema?
Maybe one more.
Sir, 30 seconds.
The fact is, because of a new smoking ordinance, the Rendezvous Bar would not even be considering construction on the patio. So that's just one issue that needs to be resolved prior to this, any decision.
That comment has already been made. Thank you. With no other comment, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
I think I do have a further question that may or may not be able to be clarified, and that is, to the extent of the current smoking ordinance, how that property would be viewed if this patio was allowed to go ahead? Would the setback be from the edge of the proposed new construction or the interior building?
Commissioners, as this would relate to the new smoking ordinance, the area would not be regulated because it would be considered an outdoor area versus an indoor area. And the smoking ordinance addresses the main entrance. It doesn't address the main entrances, so it's really pretty well-singular in nature. So I don't think that any access on Santa Fe here would be addressed either. I would defer that interpretation to our legal counsel, but I think that that 10-foot requirement would be to the main entrance to the building of the facility. And since this is attached to that facility, I think we would look at it all as one structure.
Again, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move that we, I guess we're basically approving the conditional use permit right now. And I would like to see if it's okay, then we eliminate the front entrance on the patio and retain the rear entrance. So I guess I'm not sure how I need to put that into a...
Yeah, Commissioner, one thing you'll want to do is, you have it as it is without conditions, so if you would like to eliminate that Santa Fe access or any access on the eastern portion of it, you'd probably want to pose that as a condition to be added to the action.
Okay.
In your motion.
Yeah, I would like to add that as a condition to eliminate the front entrance.
Keep the back.
Correct.
And to approve it as is. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to accept, to adopt Resolution Number 096626... I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. To consider the approval of Application CU-09-4 to allow the outdoor patio within the C4 District located at 249 North Santa Fe, however eliminating the front entrance but keeping the exit in the back.
Mayor, I would like a little more discussion. The question that I would have is, do we have clear documentation of the requirement to come back after the aging period of the wood to repaint and the other items that have been talked about? Or do we need to make those conditional as well?
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
Would you like to make that as amendment?
Yes, I would like to propose that we amend that motion to include the painting and/or staining of the structure within one year's time after proper aging.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend that, not only eliminating the front entrance and keeping the rear exit, but also revisiting the painting or staining of the fence within a one-year's time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 0910501, providing a change in zoning district classification from R3 to C1 on property legally described as the east 85 feet of Lot 7 on Ninth Street in Bishop's Edition.
This ordinance was passed on first reading, June 1st. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there any public comment? If not, I'll ask the clerk to call a roll.
Commissioner Angel.
Aye.
Commissioner Arbkey.
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Mayor Larson.
Aye.
We need a motion on that. I'd move we adopt ordinance number 0910501 on second reading.
Second. Okay, will the clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Angel.
Aye.
Commissioner Arbkey.
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Mayor Larson.
Aye.
Item 8.2, second reading ordinance number 09-10502, amending Chapter 8, Division 2 of the Salina Code by adding Section 8-54.1, providing for an amendment to Section 602.3.1 of the 2003 International Residential Code, to create an exception allowing certain walls to exceed current height limitations.
This ordinance was originally passed on first reading, June 1st, and since that no comments have been received, is there any public comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 0910502 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 0910502 on second reading. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel.
Aye.
Commissioner Arbkey.
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Mayor Larson.
Aye.
Item 8.4, Resolution Number 096626, authorizing agreement with Seline County for the county's acquisition of an easement on city property along Farley Road.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This item was before you a few weeks ago, and you asked staff to look at possible transplanting trees to maintain kind of a screen that exists now, or in some fashion, get bigger trees. And we looked at that, and Steve Blue helped us research if that was possible. But it was, based on the amount of trees, being approximately 1,400 trees, it would be not, it would be cost prohibitive and not possible to do that many trees. Transplanting or even getting mature trees or bigger trees, they're sold in kind of a sapling-type of bundle, and they can be machine-planted fairly reasonably. And then, as long as we put in a weed barrier and possibly some mulch, we believe they have the best chance of survival and will become a very healthy barrier or screening in the future. So that was about as much as we could come up with.
Any questions of staff? No, thank you. Any public comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move we adopt Resolution Number 09-6626, authorizing you to sign an agreement with Seline County for the acquisition of an easement on city property along Farley Road, and authorizing you to sign the easement deed in anticipation of closing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 09-6626, authorizing an agreement with Seline County for the county's acquisition of an easement on city property along Farley Road. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.5, discussion of the Clean Indoor Air Ordinance approved by the City Commission on January 12, 2009.
Mr. Gage.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Real brief report, but this is a follow-up from the direction provided last week in the study session to discuss potentially exemptions to the ordinance. Basically, if we could, we have a few items bullet-pointed in the report. If we could get through those, we will be making great progress on this. Wanted to identify Commissioner concerns, if there are any concerns outside of just exemptions, just to see if there's consensus on those. Inventory all possible exemptions and/or changes that the commission is interested in making. Determine what additional research and information that you need from your staff so we can follow up with you, for you with that information. And to potentially even discuss future enforcement of the current ordinance, just, and that may very well be something to deal with at the end, depending on where this conversation goes. We're here as a resource for you, so feel free to ask any questions that you have. We, I think, provided, you should all have a copy of that matrix that was provided some time ago, that sort of lists the other Kansas cities, and also the exemptions that they have provided, just to give you an idea. Those were the same, that was the same list that the commission reviewed when the ordinance was adopted a few months ago. So with that, be happy for us to answer any questions that you might have along the way.
Any questions of staff? Before I open it up to public comment, I want to make sure that everybody realizes this is just a discussion regarding the Clean Air Ordinance. I think part of the reason for opening up this discussion was not so much to repeal it today, but to talk about possibly exemptions. We have Vice President, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Peck and me have sat through already two of these forms. The new commissioners attended several of those meetings, but they're fairly new to this. When you come up for public, to speak on behalf of the public, I ask that you please not repeat what has already been said many, 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 many times. And then hopefully, if we can create some discussion and get to a compromise or a consensus today, then we'll be able to move forward. So at this time, I'll invite any public comment. And being that it is already 5:30, I am limiting everybody to two minutes. So at this time, is there any public comment?
One of these jeans are shaven, 2314 South Hillside Drive. Anyway, we pretty well beat this old dog to death, but now guys, let's just, you know, if you've got any problems with any of the amendments in the paperwork that Mr. Arbkey brought out, and, you know, if you guys wonder if we've got any problems with them, ask us today, and then please, next Monday, let's do something, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Shea. Any other public comment?
I presented you earlier with several...
Please give us your name and address.
Oh, I apologize. My name is Teresa Fairchild. I am from Linsburg, actually, but we own Chuck's Bar at 600 North Santa Fe, here in Salina. I presented earlier several of the requested information regarding how the smoking ban has affected our businesses. We have a very small bar. My husband and I, Chuck, have owned Chuck's for 10 years. Chuck's is a small neighborhood bar. Most of the patrons from Chuck's Bar have been coming there for nearly all of that time. Many of them are self-employed or laborers. They come in, sit, and talk about work. They make arrangements for their working on plumbing, painting, and construction work. They talk with bartenders about who might be looking for their work. At Chuck's, we make ends meet by keeping our costs low and our prices low. At Chuck's, we make ends meet by keeping our costs low and our prices low. We rely on these folks to be there. Since the smoking ban has taken effect, we have seen a decrease approximately fifteen percent, even with the addition of a fenced patio area. It has completely changed the dynamics of our bar. Our patrons are stopping in less and staying a shorter time. This impacts our sales as well as our bartenders' incomes. On average, our bartenders have lost four to six hours per week in wages due to closing earlier, as well as the tips that they would have received during that time. In addition, our bartenders are less able to interact with our patrons because many of them are sitting in back, leaving one or two people inside the bar. The patio is helping to retain part of our revenue, but as the summer months progress and temperatures climb, and subsequently, the winter temperatures tumble, many of these patrons may go home instead of gathering to find friends at Chuck's, as they have for many years. Projected losses could easily reach thirty to forty percent, which would make it impossible to keep our doors open. The owners, bartenders, and patrons of Chuck's Bar would ask that you please consider repealing or amending the smoking ban to allow smoking in bars and establishments that cater to an adult clientele such as ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
We're on Stevens, three forty Maple. I guess my question is on the main club areas. We are, several clubs in town have a bar in that club, and it is open to the public. But yet, in the ordinance, that building is open to the public, and yet, we are a club, and we have the bar, and I think that goes back to us, whether you're American Legion, VFW Elk, to vote on that situation at the bar, myself personally, because we are open to the public, we get revenue from the public on bingo, but some of the members want to come into them bars, they go outside smoking. Now, we are asking to save energy. With the doors going open, coming back in, are we saving energy? No, we're not. We're having a mess, and we're talking about trash. You can go downtown or anyplace else and see who is smoking and how many containers they got. Some of them are in the containers, some are not. If you don't have a container, people throw them away. You know, there are ways to get rid of them. Also, apartment house that is owned by a person, and the person manages that, he is his resident, but yet, can he smoke in that? That hallway is open to the public, and I think these, like the motels that have outside entrances, I think this should all be taken care of somehow, away. For instance, a VFW, and I'm talking about when we're voting, we can be open at the bar because we are a club, but yet, we are open to the public. My question is, why can't this happen if the people want this to happen?
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm Leslie Berry, twenty-one sixty Old Salina. I run the Salina Labor Building Social Club. Our building is strictly union, and our club membership is so much a year, and we don't, we don't have, it's not really to the public, because you have to be a union member or affiliated with the union some way, somehow. And as you have got my figures up there, I just did it for the three months, and you can look at it and see what it is. I think that the smoking should be allowed in the bars and in the clubs, and would take it in consideration, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I decided to do it anyway. My name is Terry Johnson. I have been a registered nurse for thirty-six years. I have practiced in three different states, in multiple acute care facilities in the state of Kansas. I currently teach at Kansas Wesleyan University. I teach basically children's health, but I also teach issues and leadership management introduction courses, et cetera, to nursing students. I currently also practice the Salina Regional Health Center, and I practice in the pediatric unit, but when I have leadership students, I have them in six different units of the hospital. I just wanted to make a comment about the fact that everybody seems to care a lot about the infants and the children, and that's really important to me also. But I think that people have to keep in mind, and I would encourage you to think along the same lines, that even though the really young and the really old are mostly the ones that are affected by secondhand smoke, everyone is affected in some way or the other. I cannot even tell you how many times I have admitted patients to the hospital with lung cancer, bronchiolitis, pneumonia, different kinds of airway infections, who smelled so bad that I accused them of smoking and lying to me when they said, no, they didn't smoke, because spouses within the home smoke, parents in the home smoke, other family members in the home smoke, there are lots of multiple dwelling families in the city of Salina. And it's, it's hard for me to see that we're relegating to second-class citizens those people who work in bars, because even though they're adults, they're being affected by the secondhand smoke much more than if they were just smokers themselves. So you add to the fact that if they smoke, they're also getting eight to ten to twelve hours of smoking hitting them, it causes an even higher level of potential for concerns, for healthcare issues. I really encourage you to think of your role in protecting the public here, and not decide that one citizen, one age group, has more importance than the other, and to think about how those other individuals, those adults, are being affected by that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Carpenter. Protecting the health and safety of the community is one of the.
Your address, please.
I'm sorry, what, my address?
Name and address.
Fourteen thirteen Sherwood Lane. Protecting the health and safety of the community is one of the main purposes of government, and I feel that our city commissioners have done that with the hours that I've seen you hold the public forums. Yes, businesses have the right to operate as they see fit, but they don't have the right to endanger their employees and the public. Eighty percent of Kansans do not smoke, according to the Kansas Department of Health. Businesses are used to a variety of health and safety regulations, such as for sanitation, food handling, and storage, but, and few business owners would disagree with that. I'm an unpaid volunteer for the tobacco coalition, prevention coalition, and I feel that any exception or change in the current smoking ban should not be considered, if for no other reason than it sends a message to our children that it's okay to change the rules, if it means temporary pleasure or monetary gain, even if it comes with a health risk to ourselves and to that of others. It's our responsibility to ensure the health of our community, no exception. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're all really concerned with the dangers of smoke, secondhand smoke, and that's appropriate. But are you aware that radon kills six times more people than secondhand smoke? Twenty-five thousand people a year die from lung cancers, or lung cancer from radon, radioactive gas. Thirty-four hundred supposedly die from lung cancer from secondhand smoke. And the stat on that is epidemiology stats are a manipulation of numbers and assumptions. Radon death is proven by radioactivity in the lungs that will cause lung cancer. Are we not going to pass a law against mother nature by banning radon? How about a law against the sun, when overexposure causes melanomas and skin cancer? So what we're talking about with this smoking issue is very trivial, and the risk factors should be looked at, and not, and I don't know, in lieu of a better word, we should get our priorities straight. If you don't like smoking, don't go there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Tammy Kimina, and I am a citizen of Salina, and I've been here for about ten years. And one of the things that I want to speak to you about is not so much the statistics, I think you guys already know a little bit about the statistics, is about the progression that our Salina city, city of Salina is trying to make, trying to see within the state of Kansas. Years ago, a couple of years ago, we were the first city to go ahead and make a step towards a non-smoking ordinance, and you know what? We, we almost got there, but we did a pretty good job, at least getting our voice heard. Well, since then, very, not so much similar size, but larger sized cities than ours, like Manhattan and Lawrence, have gone ahead and have made their cities smoke-free. I would ask the commissioners to please take a look at the things that the Manhattan and Lawrence City Ordinance have brought to the city, and how they have impacted or have not impacted the businesses. I want to see Salina as a future city. We talk about progress, progress, progress. Well, let's go ahead and make some progress and take this in the right direction with, by keeping the ordinance as it stands. I know you have gotten a testimonial from the American Cancer Society, so I'm not going to read all these facts and figures that you've gotten, because I know that you've seen them before, but one of the things I want to do, point out here, that is, Kansas taxpayers spend one hundred and ninety-six million annually for smoking-related healthcare costs in Medicaid, and nine hundred and twenty-seven million annually on all smoking-related healthcare costs in Kansas. So as I leave you, first of all, take a look at the Lawrence-Manhattan ordinance, and what they've done, and how they've kind of built on our first ordinance, as we saw it several years ago. And in January, when you folks kind of took it to the next step, I thought, wow, this is great. But now, all of a sudden, we're kind of taking that backwards. So let's send the right message to the rest of the cities in Kansas, and let's go ahead and keep the ordinance as stands. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's James O'Shea, in the twenty-three fourteen Hillside Drive. Yeah, you know, I hear like this lady right here, she moved here ten years ago. If she don't like the way things were when she moved here, go back where you came from. Leave our town alone, leave us alone.
Okay.
I just bought, oh man.
Please, please just remember to be respectful of one another. It's part of being, part of being here and, and having to.
I'll try to be, thank you.
Okay.
Mike Forstall. All I want to say about smoking is, I grew up in a household where my mother and father both smoked. I've never tried one, never wanted to. I avoid places where there is smoking, and I am an adult, and I would assume that we wouldn't try to tell every adult what they can and can't do. If smoking was that bad, I would assume our federal government then would do what? Make it illegal, just like they tried alcohol once. I would say that our best chance here is to exempt bars and clubs that are attended by people that are eighteen and over only, and make that a responsibility of that owner, to make sure that no children come in, because what we're talking about is public safety. You can't protect adults from themselves. If they want to commit suicide, they will, but we're trying to protect the children. Yes, I grew up with secondhand smoke. I can't tell you that I have any repercussions from that. I don't know. Only time will tell. But I can tell you that you're not going to keep adults from smoking, and especially people that attend bars and clubs. I don't go there. I don't drink, I don't smoke, but I can tell you there's a vast majority that do, and when they go to drink, they like to smoke. So I would assume that we would leave this to the adults to decide for themselves in certain places. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, let me reiterate two minutes and try not to repeat what's already been said.
Jerry Vargas, fourteen seventeen Ponca Avenue. If I'd known I was going to get thrown into this, I'd been a better note keeper, but my, the biggest point that I'm here for is that I do patronize some of the bars here in town, and over the years, I probably have a little bit more than I should have. I still, on occasion, get out, and I do see, and we're talking about the revenue loss of what these people are up here for today, not just a should we or shouldn't we not. But I have noticed a drop in a lot of the places, as I go down the street, driving on Saturday night, whether I stop or whether I don't stop, when I go in, I have noticed a loss to some of these places. They are in Salina mostly, your mom and pop-type bars that don't have big backing, that don't have the hundreds of thousands of dollars that some of your places do in Manhattan and Lawrence, those entrepreneurs there, bankers or whoever, that help get those bars started. So yes, there's been loss here, and that's what this was supposed to be about. Once again, what Mr. Forstall said, you can't protect adults from adults. We raise our kids to make good decisions and bad decisions, and us as adults, make those decisions when we reach that age. Give them a chance to decide. If you like it, go there. If you don't like it, don't go.
Thank you, sir.
Trent Davis, twenty-one forty-five Hillside Drive. Won't tell you anything I've told you before. Hope this is the last time I'll have to be up here, for this issue, anyway. I want to make up a word. It's called tuberculosis. Sounds like tuberculosis, but when you make the point that adults should not go to tobacco, the problem is tobacco is coming to us. Whether you smoke or not, as a society, we are all paying for tobacco. There was a recent Kansas Health Institute survey on the health worthiness of our counties. Before I heard the results, I actually told some folks in this room that I thought we'd come in fourth or fifth. I was actually embarrassed when I found out we came in sixty-third out of a hundred five counties. As good as we think we are, we came in near the bottom. Now, that survey was done before this ordinance was enacted. I'm sure we would have moved up many spots had we had that Clean Indoor Ordinance in place. We want to attract new businesses, new professionals. People are concerned about our schools, environment, health. We're not putting out the image we want to if we start diluting this ordinance. As far as keeping tobacco away from teens, this is all about behavior modification. In places where tobacco ordinances, cleaning ordinances have started, there is less smoking. Kids know what goes on when their parents come home smelling like cigarettes, and if you hide the cigarettes in bars, it mystifies the cigarettes, and it makes them even more eager to see what goes on, and just like drinking. And we don't need to worry so much about the kids. The people you need to worry about are the age group in this room right here. This is where a lot of the illness that we're all paying for is coming from. And as far as rights, I'm a business owner as well. In this country, despite the ideological rhetoric, we don't really have the right to run a business. We enjoy the privilege of running a business in this country. There's no business in this country that's not regulated. And with that regulation, and the privilege of running a business, come certain responsibilities. And one of those responsibilities is helping you as a government make sure that our public health is protected, our environment is protected, and our bottom line is protected. Tuberculosis is affecting our bottom line, and our health, and the image of this community. And I don't see where we send a message to the state, to our youth, or to ourselves, when we don't think we're important enough to want the best. I'd urge you not to have any exemptions whatsoever.
Thank you.
I'm Denise Ward, nine oh one Twin Oaks Drive, and the owner of the Blind Pig Sports Lounge. I've already provided to the commissioners my numbers showing what my loss has been over the last month, and it continues on the downside, on the down. over the last month, and it continues on the downside. I've also had to, I'm getting ready to start laying off help because I cannot afford to pay them. I'm glad Mr. Davis has finally admitted that this is about behavior modification. It's not about public health. Thanks. But I, the other thing that I want you to make sure that you take into consideration, yes, larger cities have tried a full-out smoking ban. Places like Kansas City have finally realized that it doesn't work for some of their businesses, and they are allowing them to buy opt-outs. Basically, they can buy a license where you can allow smoking. Wichita has the same thing, as long as it is an 18 or over establishment, then you can buy a permit to exclude, to allow smoking in your establishment. If we're not looking at an all-out exclusion of just the bars, maybe that is a route that we can also look at. I gladly would pay, I would pay a fee to allow smoking in my establishment if it's hurt me that much. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Patrick Burrows, Trinity United Methodist Church, 901 East Neal. I am a United Methodist pastor, and the United Methodist Church has a long history of social action in the community, and especially in the plight of those that are helpless or powerless to be agents of change. Each four years since 1908, the United Methodist Church gets together and puts together what's called the social principles of our church. The first one in 1908 condemned such things as child labor laws, unsafe food packaging, and advocated for the right for women to vote. In 2008, at the church's general conference in San Antonio, they addressed other social issues that are on our table. One of those dealt with the use of tobacco. And so, the church, the United Methodist Church, in a way urges for governments of all levels to support and encourage the support of restriction of smoking in public areas and workplaces. This is the official stance of our church, and it's one in which the church is prophetic. And that is an appropriate role of the church. Commissioners, you know, you have the position of being policymakers, and you have that responsibility to look out for the welfare of all of the citizens of Salina, not just the loudest, not just those who can show up here today, but for all of those citizens with that. With that in mind, I thank you for your time and pray for God's wisdom to be upon you as you decide what is in the best interest of all.
One final comment here for me.
Seventh time is a charm. This is your last time.
Right. I challenge Trent Davis to provide me one death certificate from secondhand smoke.
I would challenge you to provide me one death certificate from the Holocaust. Doesn't mean it doesn't happen.
Were we talking about World War II? Are we talking about smoking?
We're not. I mean, it's irrelevant. It happens.
Only from epidemiology studies and stats. It's not provable. It's an assumption of statistics.
What is provable is the amount of toxins and poisons within a cigarette. That is provable.
Sure is.
The tobacco companies themselves will provide you that information.
I agree.
And so, to the agree, to the degree that it affects me, that can be debated. But the fact is, if I don't want to breathe those poisons and toxins, I should have the ability not to do so in a public setting.
This question was directed at Trent Davis.
Just aside.
One documented death certificate from secondhand smoke. Anybody?
Thank you.
Merlin Stevens. And Mr. Peck, you go out here to your city-go buses and wait for the traffic and see how much pollution is on the street at a corner, waiting for the bus to come by. We talk about pollution. Look at Cape Canaveral when something lifts off. Thank you very much. There is no set problems, just like Mr. Davis says. You can say it's smoking, you can say it's drinking. I grew up when we had meat and ate it every day and had no problems with it. We put the things in there that keeps it and preserve it, and that's where the things are going bad. Thank you very much. Pollution, yes, there is out there, a lot, on cars. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Shane Rife. I'm at 2363 Chapel Ridge. I'm actually a brand-new resident to Salina. I recently graduated from Bethany College in Linsburg, and I felt that Salina had a certain charm to it, so I definitely wanted to move here. Part of that charm was definitely the ordinance that you guys just passed, and I was very grateful about that. One thing that drew me to Salina was your guys' commitment to keep Salina citizens alive and healthy, which I think is commendable. In kind of a response to what was just said, it can be cited on the Kansas Department of Health and Environment's website that 400 Kansans die every year from secondhand smoke. So, I think that's one really important thing to think of. I want to speak just really briefly from my age group's perspective. Like I said, I just graduated college, and as you guys can imagine, locations that traditionally allow smoking are places that my age group not only frequent quite often, but we also work in those environments. And by maintaining this ordinance with no amendments, it sends a positive message, not only to my age group, but to Kansans, as well as the rest of the US, that Salina, Kansas, USA, is committed to keeping not only my age group, but the rest of Salina alive and healthy. So, in closing, this is definitely a public health issue, and public health cannot be compromised. So, thank you very much.
My name is Susan Tucker. I live at 126 West Hillside Terrace. I think it's the longest address in Salina. I come to you today because I read in the newspaper this morning on the neighbor section, I like to read that, in the back, it said, "25 years ago today, the school board made the decision to stop having designated smoking areas in the high school." I was there when that happened. I remember the school board vacillating back and forth as to what to do. We had designated areas, then we tried designated timed areas, then we decided not to do it, then we put it back. Teachers that smoked were very upset. I'm an adult. I should be able to smoke anywhere I want to, whenever I please to. They cannot tell me what to do. Students were saying, "I can't make it through the day without my cigarettes. How am I supposed to learn? I just won't come back. That'll show them." Parents were saying, "If there's going to be smoking in the school, I don't want my children there." The school board had a difficult decision to make. 25 years ago, they made a decision to help the many instead of the few. 25 years from now, how are we going to be viewing the decision that you make? Will it be a decision to help the many, or will it be a decision to help the few? I'm certainly hoping that our children don't look back 25 years from now and say, "Oh, my goodness, they allowed people to smoke in front of other people." I am hoping that you keep the ordinance intact the way it is.
Wasn't sure if he was coming up to speak or just to take his seat. Okay, just being polite. Discussion or comments from the commission?
Well, I want to thank everyone for coming and making their presentations. I think with the number of phone calls I've gotten and the correspondence that I read every one of these, and I've spent quite a bit of time on the internet looking at other ordinances in other states and what we've done here in Kansas, I think it comes down to a couple of different things. If we have too many laws, there's no respect for those laws. Another thing is, I think adults do need to be responsible for their behavior, and that includes modeling no smoking in front of children. I agree with that. I also grew up in a household that did have smokers in it, and when I was in seventh grade, I asked my dad to quit smoking. And to my great amazement, he did. He's 87 years old today, and I think that's one reason he's still alive. So, I think it's important that the children also take some responsibility here in asking their parents to stop smoking. It did work for me, and I did make a big deal of it. So, if we continue this education process for our children in the schools and in our clubs, I think that's something we should continue to encourage. However, I also think it's a great burden on businesses that have spent a great deal of time and their effort in building their clientele, to take that away from them and their livelihood and their employees. And if we continue this process, we're going to be like several other cities in Europe that have lost 40% of their small business bars and the revenue that that did generate. So, I don't want to see that stopped here as long as we're continuing to sell tobacco through our retail establishments and tax it with a federal and a state and some, in some instances, local taxes. So, if we want to continue the taxing and have a local tax on cigarettes here, so be it. But I do think that business owners have a right to determine what happens in their
Well, I don't smoke, but I also don't go into businesses that allow smoking because I don't like it. In last week's study session, we talked about possible exceptions, and one of the main reasons I agreed to talk about exceptions today was because it was my hope that we could reach a majority agreement on those exceptions and avoid the special election. What I think is going to happen today is not what I'd hoped last Monday. It became clear to me pretty quickly after I agreed to discuss exceptions that there's no way we're going to reach a majority agreement on what those exceptions should be. I believe the vast majority of Salina residents are tired of hearing about this issue. They're tired of us, the commission, they're tired of city staff spending time on it, and they're tired of their taxpayer dollars going to any further discussion of the issue. I think if we go down this road to talk about exceptions, we're inevitably going to come to a stalemate, and we're going to end up with a special election anyway. I think it's inevitable that this issue will be decided at the ballot box, not by the commission.
Yeah, I guess I would like to say that I completely agree with that. Commissioner Angel's thoughts on that. It is a difficult issue, and we do sit up in front of a community that we know has so much passion on this issue. We hope it's a community that remains together as a community, and this isn't one of those crippling issues. In reading the look back 25 years ago, I was a student at Central when that came up, and I had many friends whose lives were rocked by that. Their rights were taken away. And, you know, it just seems so strange to think about implementing a smoking policy in our schools and allowing that. So, I do wonder what it would look like. I do take one, I do want to note one very important thing, that this issue has been framed up, whether it's in the media, by rhetoric, or what have you, that it's a business owner's rights complete issue. And in framing that way, then any one of these small business owners that sit on the commission that don't vote in favor of repealing the ban are against small businesses and are against business owners' rights. I can't tell you how many inspections I have every year, and each time I place a new equipment, I'm sure a large percentage of it goes to safety devices and personal protective equipment and many other things. And I know that there's things that would be effective at keeping the birds away from my grapes, but they're no longer legal. They weren't accused, they're proven to be carcinogens, but they're no longer legal. And we struggle with that, and we still fight that flight to the birds every year. So, I don't think there is an easy middle ground. Middle ground to me means I am choosing, if I embrace it as a health issue, which I have, a public health concern. Middle ground to me means I have all of a sudden decided who is not important as a citizen and who is important as a citizen, and it's important that I make that clear.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we all know how you feel, but is there anything you wanted to comment?
Well, no, I completely agree with both Commissioner Jennings and Commissioner Angel's comments. And Commissioner Arkin and I are certainly on the opposite ends of the spectrum here, but I, you know, part of me as a business owner really does admire the fact that he has went out on a limb to stick up for business owners' rights. And it's simply a matter of where him and I end up falling on this issue as to the differences we have. But in my opinion, I do not think that we will find any middle ground for us to agree upon. And I think the cleanest, cleanest way, we can argue who should be carrying the burden of getting signatures for a petition and for a special election, et cetera. But I believe the cleanest way for us to go about solving this issue once and for all is to simply let the ordinance stand as it currently does. The opposition to the ordinance, I believe, does have the requisite number of signatures to bring this to a special election. They can submit those signatures, and that will be the cleanest, quickest way for us to bring this before the community. And so, I guess I would advocate at this point that that's the direction this commission
And then I get the last word. Okay. It's no secret that I was against the ban. I am not advocating smoking. I am not condoning smoking. I do not smoke. No one in my family smokes. But, business is business. And when I stepped out of that box and looked at it that way... In case you don't know, I own a travel agency. Several years ago, with the discovery of Travelocity, I lost a ton of business. Nobody came to my defense. Nobody bailed me out. People came in and would use me for information, then go home and look at themselves on the internet. So, how's that for faithfulness and loyalty? Okay, so, I put myself in that business aspect and realized that because of the timing also of where we are in this economy, I was at least trying to help a small business owner. I, too, agree with Commissioner Angel, thought about the exceptions or exemptions. And then we were given this matrix of everybody that has a cleaner ordinance, okay? Everyone has exceptions or exemptions. I went as far and went to other states and looked to see what they had. And even though you hear that so-and-so is smoke-free, they have exceptions. And the majority of them were private clubs, bars, then it went on to bingo halls, then it went on to bowling alleys. And that's when I realized, this is spinning out of control. By the time you start, "Okay, we'll let you." "Well, then, we'll let you." "Okay, well, then, we've got to let you." "Oh, I guess we need to let you." We're right back to where we started. Everybody deserves the same chance. When I was mentioning to the business owners that were calling me and telling me, "I only have three people in my office. Why can you not exempt businesses that are five employees or less, three employees or less?" They felt just as much entitled as the bar owner. They felt just as much entitled as the bingo hall owner or the bowling alley owner. And then I realized, it is just a can of worms and it's spinning out of control. So, then I remembered this petition that we have and wondered why it hadn't been turned in. And then I wondered, is it because you had one person in your group that just didn't want to turn in that petition? And I didn't understand why that one person, I thought he spoke for the group, until I was told to the difference last week that not everybody agrees with him. was told to the difference last week that not everybody agrees with him. Why he did not turn in that, turn over those signatures to another person in that group so that person could take the responsibility of getting the petition down to the county council, I don't know. So here's my advice for that group. And I agree here with Vice Mayor Peck. The cleanest way of doing this is to let the people vote for the people by the people. If Mr. Schwarzenbruder will not release that petition, those signatures, to another responsible individual who will take that down to the county council to get the ball rolling, to put that in front of the people so that everyone can make the choice, and by the way, it is not smokers versus non-smokers. I have had just as many non-smokers call me, tell me that they are not a smoker, but they agree with me. So I hated that we were calling them smokers against non-smokers. No, they were opponents versus proponents. If the petition is not turned over and given to someone else, then as much as it pains me to tell that group, start all over. If you're as passionate as you are and you've got the following that you do, and it's been 30 days since this ordinance has been in effect, your signatures will be rolling in like this, especially since it's caused so much of a controversy. Then you take that down to the county council to get it on the ballot, and hopefully within two to three months, we'll be going to the ballot, as much as it pains me to spend your money in these tough economic times, so that the people will vote on something by the people. And regardless if it's you win or I win, at least we can move on because we do have some very important issues coming up. And I wish we would see this kind of passion when we're discussing the budget, things that really affect you. This is really how your money is being spent and used. So it would just be near and dear to my heart if you would continue to attend our Monday meetings from now until August when we pass that budget, because I know that you truly are interested in Salina, more so than just the smoking ordinance or the clean air ordinance, that you care about this community and how we are spending your money and taking care of you. With that said, what do you need from us now, Jason?
Well, again, we do have the ordinance in place, so if, the only thing we were looking for is if you were wanting to make any kind of changes, if you had consensus to ask us to go back and draw that up. So if you don't, I think, just letting, I think from what it sounds like, you may not. If not, then we continue as we are. If you do have consensus for a change, you'd need to basically communicate that consensus to us, and then we would start working on whatever that might be.
Well, the way I understand it, we're giving it back to the people?
Yeah. I feel like the ordinance is overly broad and too invasive, but I don't think we'd ever come to an agreement on exceptions, so I'd rather just get it to the vote.
Okay. Then that ends this item on the agenda. I want to thank everybody for their participation and for being civil.
Mayor, if I may, clarify the motion.
If we can have, if we could have, if we could have a little respect here, though, we're still in session.
Mayor, if I may, the motion, we have two subjects for the executive session. The first involves trade secrets. The second involves matters subject to the attorney-client privilege. I think it would be helpful for all concerned, or probably best, if we keep those two isolated. And that is what prompted the proposed motion there before Commissioner Peck. I believe the latter one on the page with the number one by it relates to the trade secrets. I think it would be best to start with that, and then, once we address that, we can reconvene and then recess for purposes of the attorney-client privilege matters.
Okay.
I would first move that we take a quick recess for five minutes.
Second.
It's been moved in second for a quick recess of five minutes, and then we will reconvene in this room in five minutes.
Can I go right into the?
All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
I should wait then to make the, okay.
Again, the city commission meeting.
Mayor, I'd move we recess in the executive session for 15 minutes to discuss confidential data relating to the financial affairs and trade secrets of a corporation for the reason that public discussion of the information would competitively disadvantage the corporation, and reconvene at 6:40 P.M.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we recess into executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We are in executive session.